I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners. Welcome, welcome. I'd like to see a big crowd in the audience. I'd like to start things off by saying congratulations to our newly elected mayor, who will be taking the gavel here next month. Looking forward to that. And if you would, please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we do at the beginning of every meeting, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence and think of all the folks who are having a rough time of it today. Thanks. Board, we have an agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second from Ms. Ingram. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have an agenda. The first item on our agenda is a couple of public hearings. Our attorney is not feeling well, so we will make do. The first item is a zoning amendment request, 153.180D, commercial zone site requirements, an exception to previously platted use as an exception to minimum lot size requirement.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. There are two public hearings this evening. The rule of procedure will apply for this first public hearing. The second public hearing was going to be a quasi judicial, and we'll have a little bit different set of rules for that. So we'll start with the first one. Public notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards and websites that meets or exceeds statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all comments in a concise and brief manner. Submitted written statements will be recorded in a similar manner and made a part of the record of each hearing and must be submitted in full to the clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement will be recorded. Please identify yourself by giving your name and complete address. There will be no debate. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a three-minute time period. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. The first public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider zoning request, zoning amendment request, 153.1880D, commercial site zone requirements exceptions, previously platted use as an exception to the minimum lot size requirements. We have no speakers that have signed up. Mr. Mayor, for that.
Yes.
You're representing Wright Shores?
All right, sir. You'll come to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff. My name's Stuart Davis. I live at 702 West Fifth Street. I'm the president of the Wright Shores Association. I want to speak briefly how we got here with this zoning text amendment. In 1970 and 73, the Wright Shores Development Company and Midtown Development developed Wright Shores, Fourth and Fifth Street. Subsequently, they built, plotted, platted, and the Kill Devil Hills mayor signed off on two parking lots. Everybody knows the one on the end of Fifth Street. It's a pork chop-sized parking lot. And we discovered that there is one on the Jolly Roger side, that Fourth Street was never developed and came through like Fifth Street does and crosses the highway because it was wetlands. There's also a 10-foot easement between Fourth and Fifth Street and 1910 Bay Drive. I contacted the Wright Shores Corporation. They were dissolving. As everybody's seen, the wah-wahs being built on that piece of land and then houses built adjacent to the Target. They still have the 75-year lease to Target. We hired counsel, we're deeded these properties. We're a nonprofit organization. We registered them with the county. And we took over those properties. I'm saying they're actually deeded to us. We created an association. We created a board and did all the requirements. In that, we reached out to the town on different things, and we did not, we were not aware that we had to get a permit for Fourth Street. And we pulled up bushes and we pulled up trash, hundreds of pounds of trash, over 100 cans where someone's feeded feral cats. Everybody's aware of the feral cat situation and the homeless and so forth. We thought we were cleaning up, doing the right thing. We got some bad advice. Once we did that, I went in and spoke to the planning board. It was not a pleasant conversation. It even got back to the mayor that it was something personal. It's nothing personal about this. I represent 327 homeowners, which is the largest footprint in Kill Devil Hills. We're your neighbor. We cleaned up the lot. For 50 years, that lot was an eyesore. I've been coming here to the beach since the late 60s. I'm a retired Marine. I'm 100% disabled vet. I'm a homeowner here now, so I take pride in the community and what it stands for here. So we thought we were doing the wrong thing. We got bad advice. I'm not here to point fingers or say what happened, but we were fined. We jumped through the hoops, went overboard, and did what the town asked for. Those fines were waived, and we greatly appreciate that. So we had a meeting here on May 9th with Cameron Ray, and we discussed what we're trying to accomplish. So in essence, this, in a nutshell, this is it. In 1983, whoever rewrote the ordinances and variances for Kill Devil Hills, either erroneously, purposely, whatever it was, they left us out. They took the square footage from 7,500 to 15,000 square feet. We are the only existing property, Fifth Street being 14,000 square feet, Fourth Street being 12,500 square feet. We're the only properties that in 1970 and 73 obtained permits, were plotted, platted for 26 parking space parking lots. So when I called the county, they said, once it's plotted, platted, signed off for, whether it was developed or not, there's still parking lots. So that's how we recognize it as a parking lot. The town says it's different. I was told by the planning director that just because a piece of land, when you buy a piece of land and you call it an airport, it doesn't make it an airport. Well, the difference is, this was signed off by the Kill Devil Hills mayor in 1973. It was plotted and platted. It was never developed. No one can tell me how that piece of pavement on Fifth Street got there. Was it permitted? Who put it there? Nobody can tell me. They also contend that on Fourth Street, that everybody calls it the cut through. Everybody's parked there for years. I've talked to hundreds if not thousands of people. I parked there, my kids parked there. It belongs to the town. It's been private property since 1970 and 73. It belonged to the Wright Shores Corporation and Midtown Development. It was known as common property for the homeowners. It was just never been regulated. The only difference now is, it's being regulated. We contacted the town. We contacted the fire department. We contacted the police department. We contacted the realtors. We contacted everybody. We put it in the newspaper. Hey, this is going to be regulated now. You're going to be towed. We don't want to tow people, but we, you have to change the atmosphere that now it's going to be regulated. The purpose of it was for our homeowners. That's all we're asking to do.
Just maybe if you need to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. We just had to do our due diligence. So we had a meeting, and we were told to submit this ZTA because we didn't qualify for variance. They said it was four qualifications for a variance to submit this ZTA. Now we're being told that the ZTA is not proper, that we should go the variance route. All we're trying to do is be allowed to do improvements on our property and give it back. We're the only ones in that category, whatever language needs to be done, so we're able to improve because we've had numerous incidents of vandalism, and we have a liability problem. Someone comes out of the Jolly Roger at night, trips and falls, and falls on our land. Now that we're regulating it, we're liable. So two incidents, we're trying to stop the vandalism, and we're trying to stop the liability for these two lots. So we're just trying to do the right thing and find out what the process. The town is the one that recommended to us this ETA process. Now, they're saying that's not the proper thing. So if you're going to deny it, that's fine. What we ask is if you waive our $500 and put it toward the variance, and we'll go that route. But we're following the instruction from the town.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this public hearing? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, close the public hearing.
All right, so public hearing is closed. Board, you've read the, excuse me, the memos on this and the staff report. You've seen that the planning board reviewed this a couple months ago and recommended denial. Staff also recommends denial. It sounds like to me that this is one of those situations where hindsight's always 20-20. The, you know, tell staff, tell me if I have this correct. Rules change all the time. Have changed for, ever since the town's been a town. And if you have a, if you have a plan to develop something on your property, build a house, business, whatever it is, if that's approved, you've got two years to build it. After that, all bets are off, and you got to start over. Is that a fair way to describe that?
I think it's one year.
It's one year. When it comes to subdivisions and uses incorporated with a subdivision, it is two years.
Okay.
But for site plan review, for permitted uses in the town of Kill Devil Hills, it's one year from approval date.
Right. So for the benefit of the public that's listening and maybe doesn't understand all the details, just wanted everybody to kind of get a more rounded view of it because we haven't really given a presentation about all the things that we've seen that, you know, came, got us to this point. But that rule that was mentioned in '83 was to increase the size of the minimum lot size to, from 7,500 to 15,000. Those rules have gone in both directions and variety of times, but that's not something you could turn on a dime. I want to give the board a chance to weigh in, but I wanted to kind of give a little bit of a high level there before we got into it. John, you, how many thoughts?
I was just going to ask staff if they could describe the difference between applying for a ZTA versus a variance, if it's not apples to apples, so to speak. Different whole process, different whole approval route.
Absolutely. So what you're seeing tonight is a zoning text amendment that applies to the entire town of Kill Devil Hills, or at least in this section, is the entire commercial zoning district. That's for any lot that was platted prior to 1983. So it's a town-wide amendment. When you're looking at a zoning, I'm sorry, a variance, it is a site-specific request showing that you have a unique hardship and that this is, this is not an ordinary request because it doesn't, it can't meet the rules or it's, or there's a hardship. Hardship can be a lot of different things, but the...
And it gives you relief from this.
Yeah, so you're asking for a relief from the rules because those rules make it, in this situation, maybe impossible to have a parking lot on this, on this lot, and it's the only right use for it. Zoning text amendments can be narrowly written to where it doesn't, you know, it's not very wide, and they can be, they can also be very broad, like retail stores are allowed an entire commercial zoning district. So it's all in, and what you're right, and words are very important when it comes to zoning ordinance. Board of Commissioners is, who's going to look at a zoning text amendment versus, and a variance will be looked at by the zoning board of adjustments? And any questions about the difference, we'd be happy to...
Yeah, and a variance runs with that specific piece of land in perpetuity. So when a variance is granted for relief from a specific section of the zoning ordinance, which is what a variance is for, to allow for development of his property, it runs with the land, not the ownership. A zoning text amendment runs with the entire town, and it becomes part of all property that meets that criteria. So this is site-specific and in perpetuity, and it's a legal document. It is a quasi judicial, it's a, it's a legal determination created by the zoning board of adjustments.
Thank you. I think that John brings up a good point in trying to call attention to the idea of the hardship, that is why we have variance as an opportunity, without necessarily getting into why we didn't steer him in that direction. In the first place, I wanted to know if the staff had any comments about the request about applying the fee towards the other process?
It's a non-refundable fee. That's how it's, how it's written on our, in our ordinance, budget ordinance.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Do we have authority to even modify that in any way?
I wouldn't recommend it. I don't, I'm not sure exactly how you would go back and modify the budget ordinance to take that out for this one situation.
Right. It's more of a management issue, not a Commissioners issue.
And the reason for the fee is already, I mean, it's already gone through the staff to the planning board, to the Board of Commissioners.
Just wanted to explore that fully.
Yeah.
Wanted to give the other Commissioners opportunity?
My biggest concern with it was the fact that this would apply to every commercial zone, and, you know, I've got a big problem with that. Other than that, I, you know...
Right, yeah. It was very well-intentioned, and it's served us well since the 80s, the minimum lot size that we have for that zone.
Yeah, I'm with, I'm with Terry on that. Is there, Meredith, can you clarify the, whether the, where did the recommendation come in, or was that to, which, of which one to do, or is...
I can speak. It was, it was my meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And going back and get some of the history of it. We're working backwards here.
Right.
We had a property in violation that staff met with them to, how can we help you move forward with this? What are the options? The option obviously was to come into compliance with what the rules are today because that's what our job is to enforce. And it was given an option that you can either submit for a text amendment, or you can submit for a variance.
Okay.
This is the path that they chose, and the zoning text amendment, that is what guided us to make the comments that we did.
So just to clarify that you all gave the two options, and one of the options was chosen.
Correct. That is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
The variance seems like it has lots of possibility.
Yeah, I mean, variances in the state of North Carolina are hard to get. You've got to have evidence to show why you are unique. That was explained, but there was options given.
Right.
Thank you.
Variances do happen for lots of reasons, but usually things that, when rules change and challenging situations arise out of that, unintended consequences. One more chance for discussion, other than that, I'm looking for...
Well, let me ask, so not refunding, obviously, the 500, but waiving the fee for the variance application, is that possible?
No, I don't think so. That's not how your ordinance reads.
Okay.
And, and you've had other situations where people applied for a zoning amendment that did not get approved, and you didn't, you know, we don't refund that.
Yes, no, I was just wondering if they were relying on bad advice or whatnot, I don't know. If they were given the option of two, and one was not really an option, I would just...
It was an option, but it wasn't an option that...
That would pass, yeah.
That was most likely going to pass.
Okay.
But as Cameron said, we're working backwards, that we were dealing with properties that were in violation. We were trying to get beyond that.
Right.
And it was more than just trash picked up and weeds pulled.
Right, yeah. Grab all, some other things, yeah.
Right. It just seemed like one wasn't an option really at all. I mean, knowing that we weren't going to change that, but anyway, that's all.
All right, so we're looking for a motion. Once again, I'm reminding you that the planning board unanimously recommended denial. Staff also recommends denial.
I'll make a motion to deny the zoning amendment request, 153.180D, commercial zone site requirements.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Ingram.
Second.
And a second. Mr. Gray, any further discussion?
Just real quick, Mr. Davis did mention that the town did work with and kind of forgive some of the fines that Wright Shores had accumulated, so we may not have flexibility with this application fee, but the town has been supportive and, you know, collaborative in that nature.
Good to remind everybody of that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The second public hearing will please come to order. The same rules of procedure apply as the first. However, also, this hearing is a quasi judicial in nature. Only evidence of a fact-based nature will be permitted. All those providing evidence will be sworn in by the town clerk. If you are giving testimony, please approach the town clerk's desk for your oath. Meredith, would that be you, or Cameron?
Both.
Both? And Mr. Robinson, thank you. The reason for this, Mayor and Board of Commissioners, is Bermuda Bay is a PUD, which amending, they're asking for an amended site plan for a covered pavilion with a storage, because it is a planned unit development and a special use in the government and institutional zone, the public hearing is a part of the board's consideration. The, let's see, who's been, we're done back there? Mayor Sproul, do you accept into evidence the meeting materials, including the commercial site plan application, the owner's authorization, and the accompanying plans?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, do you have a statement that you'd like to make?
No, I'm just here to answer questions if anything comes up.
All right, so this one has to do with the covered pavilion and storage here. We've seen the notes there, so will there be sworn testimony then, or no?
Not unless the board has any questions of the staff.
Okay, we're just sort of...
The site, the site plan meets the ordinance.
Right.
The planning board did review it on the 19th of September and forwarded it to the board, recommending approval.
All right. So any questions for staff?
No.
No? Good. Motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the special use site plan review, Bermuda Bay, U.D. Section 200A.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that motion.
We got a second from Commissioner Winley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And that closes our second public hearing.
Yes.
We'll move on to another item, but it's called a public comment. This applies to everybody in the room, anybody who would like to have something, has something to say about the future of the town or anything, anything at all, really. We have two public commentary periods every meeting, here at the beginning and once at the end. Bigger discussions in the spring and fall every year, but this is me really taking up time, letting me think about what you want to say. All you got to do is approach the podium there, tell us your name and where you live, and got to keep it to three minutes unless you're representing a group, then you have five minutes.
No signups, Mr. Mayor.
Nobody signing up? I see somebody with a finger up. Yes, please.
I'm not sure whether first and last is good or bad.
All good, all good.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Poehl. I'm a homeowner in Wright Shores, Kill Devil Hills, of course. Last, last meeting, which was a lot less people, we had a discussion about the beach accesses at Fourth Street and Fifth Street. And I've been notified, I have a limited time to say what I want to say, so I do have further information. I've got a hard copy, and I've also got a PDF, if anybody's interested in seeing more depth in what I'm saying. The town of KDH issued an Instagram in March of 1923, and it says briefly, "The access will be open in sand access for the near future, near future, as the town seeks grant funding for replacement." And that was in March. This is November. From the meeting last month, I got the feeling that it's not progressed, so I'm hoping that there is progression in that area. I've worked out a few of my own, what I thought were solutions, and they're in the file and everything, but I, and I've got pictures, but I don't have time to show them to you. One, replace the walkway to the dune on Fourth Street. Second, replace the walkway and do a flyover over the dune, which Kill Devil Hills does most of their accesses now, anyway. Option number three, asphalt part of it and make limited parking. Option number four, asphalt to the dune, allowing limited parking with a flyover at dune to the beach. The next item is porta, oh, I'm scared, John, porta potties. There was some discussion last, at the last meeting on, is it feasible for porta potties? I met with the owner of Atlantic OBX, who provides the porta, porta potties to Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, next head. And we went to Fourth and Fifth Street. I asked him after we had that meeting what his thoughts were, and this is what he said to me. This is Brian Lincoln, owner of Atlantic OBX Incorporated. Met Dennis, that's me, on site today at beach accesses, Fourth and Fifth Street. We can easily service these plots, pots at the places Dennis and I spoke about placing them. We recommend twice a week cleaning at beach accesses due to high volume. And I've got pictures of that, of what we talked about for the placement. The last thing, and I've got pictures of that also, but rinse-off showers. I call them rinse-off because that's what they're basically for, is for rinsing yourself off to the beach. In addition to no porta, porta potties at Fourth and Fifth Street, there's no showers at Fourth and Fifth Street. And it's kind of twofold. Number one, I would hope that the town would see fit to put showers at Fourth and Fifth Street, and I would hope that they would explore, which we discussed last meeting, the possibility of showers, either modifications of the ones that we have now, or at least trying them out, maybe at Fourth and Fifth Street. You put your hand on, you get water. You take your hand off, you don't get water. All of you have gone to the beach. How many times do you see the shower facilities either still running, partially running, missing shower heads and whatever? So I hope they would explore that.
Yes.
Yes.
You need to...
Yeah, in summation.
A little time there.
First Street, Second Street, Third Street, well, they have porta potties and showers. And it's time that the homeowners and visitors have those amenities at Fourth and Fifth Street beach accesses. Thanks for your consideration, Mary.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak? All right, going once, going twice. We will close the public comment. Responsive public comment. We really appreciate citizens when they come and take that time to do all that homework and help us make decisions. I'm sure this board will be working hard at the 2024-25 budget leading up to the spring. So it's always good to have that information. Anybody else responsive public comment?
I'm just following, following up with last, our last meeting. I know you had a rough timeline for a shoreline, shoreline access plan that staff's working on.
Yes.
Can you refresh the group on that?
It'll, it'll be in late spring, and our buildings and ground has already started doing the legwork with just the inventory, site, existing site features, existing conditions of those site features, so that we can give you a comprehensive look at what we have. And then we will take that information and also try to determine improvements that can happen at each access. And then the board would have that to work for through the grant process. And the next grant process is in fall of 2024.
All right. And I'll, thank you, Dennis, for such a prepared report. And for, you know, I've never had somebody advocate so hard for porta potties before. So, thank you, sir.
And I think that's where we pretty much had discussed at the last meeting that the...
And I think that's where we pretty much had discussed at the last meeting that the shoreline access plan and so forth would, you know, address that.
Certainly has been.
Definitely on the, on the radar.
For folks who don't come to all our meetings, we've been talking about this for many years.
Yeah.
And COVID kind of put a lot of things on the back burner. We're, I know this board is excited to get back to a lot of those priorities that we have put out in our, in our bigger visions and plans over the last few years. Moving on, our next items are introductions and presentations. The first is the North Carolina League of Municipalities Commemorative Resolutions.
In microphone, please.
Yes, microphone, sorry, I don't record this sort of thing. So, we're out here, of course, we consider our greatest asset in the town is our staff. They're, they're the folks that make everything happen, and it's really amazing. We have a hundred and twenty-three full-time and sixty-five seasonal folks that take care of all the business of the town, and they make a difference every single day. And of our lives, our businesses, our properties, our property owners, our visitors, sorry. They keep us safe, they manage the town's finances, they provide us recreational opportunities, wonderful events. They maintain our streets, keep our community clean, and provide us safe water, just to name a few of the things that they do. At the recent twenty twenty-three North Carolina League of Municipalities Conference, commemorative resolutions were adopted honoring the service of municipal public servants here in Kill Devil Hills and across the state. Included in this, including the retirement resolutions were the following town employees. So when I call your name, please come up so I can present you with this resolution in your honor. The first one is Marion Henry A. B. Donski, our water plant operator. Not able to make it, okay? The next one is, am I saying that right, Golet? Golet Jeanette Junior, he's sanitation equipment operator. Not making it either, but we appreciate their service. Next is Beverly Kissinger, our finance director. Next is Police Sergeant Derwood Lee Twitty Junior. Finally, Joseph Michael Mike Wilson, sanitation team leader. Now, at the same conference, a memorial resolution was adopted to honor our longtime dedicated public servant in our K D H family. She was a force of nature, and her former colleagues strive every day to keep the guiding light of her service in our community. Of course, I'm talking about Mary Elizabeth Quidley, our town clerk. So round of applause. Right, I understand that Mary's sister Carol is able to come, accept this in her honor? Would you like to come take a picture? I'm so sorry. Thank you. Mary's always keeping an eye on us. Just feel it. So the next item is Community Parents Awards, which you see up here on the table. This is one of the most exciting moments of the year because no one knows who actually won yet. So I guess we will get into that. So just a little soft lead into this, this is the Community Appearance Awards, for those of you who might not be familiar. The administration department has a meeting that details goals and processes by which we choose the Community Parents Commission, and those folks establish recognition in these biennial Community Parents Awards. So we'll have the three awards that you see up here are Most Improved, Multi-Unit Complex, and Best Overall. So kind of different ways you can win. Most Improved is an exciting one because it could come from behind and really, really make a mark on the town when folks take over a new spot. So, the nominees are Avalon Pier, Outer Banks Motor Lodge, Starbucks, Target, and John Yancy's Oceanfront Inn.
Would you like to write them out, Ron?
Oh, you want, you want everybody?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Let's have everybody, anybody who represents any of those folks come up here, and then we'll have a big drum roll, make the big reveal. I'm sure everybody made it up, but. You know what I don't know?
These are the folks who've been nominated.
Oh, we're giving away for all nominations, this one.
Yes, and then you'll announce from those with that group, and she's the winner of that too.
We should have had a dress rehearsal. So Avalon Pier.
We'll get it to them.
Okay. And there you go. Starbucks, I guess we don't have anybody representing Starbucks here today, but. There's Target, I recognize the jacket. Anybody from John Yancy? They're also looking great, and we'll say that for them, round of applause. A little birdie whisper to my ear, the answer. A big round of applause for Starbucks is our winner.
Thank you for coming. Good to see you.
So this next group is Multi-Unit Complex, so if you're a strip mall, this gives you an opportunity. Kind of hard to go up against Target if you're a strip mall, so then it's a cat in the corner. The first nominee in multi-unit is Atlantic Dicks. Anybody here from Atlantic Dicks? Round of applause. And the next is the Beach Road Bottle Shop, love those guys. Anybody here from them? There, they're looking great. Our next nominee is Hang Twelve Art. All these nominees, sure, we have standing remote. Our next nominee is Honey and Hive Boutique. Some great, all these people at the nominee, they're doing a great job, they're all, I've been here a couple of times, Proof Bakery. Our last nominee for the multi-unit is the Sun Shack Tanning Line. And the winner is? Wait, what's turn later, is anybody here? We figured it out.
Where's Michael?
Michael's performing, he's got a nose.
Big round of applause for Honey and Hive.
And then you hang to the vice chair of the Community Appearance Commission, and it's Melinda McGalsky.
Yes, thank you so much. And we got one more set.
Best overall.
Best overall, this is the big prize. The first. First nominee is Nax Head Hammocks. Our next nominee was, is Newso Beach Grill, also always looking great over there. Best overall, the next one is Outer Banks Frontier Church. We also have the nominee of Pink Man's Barbecue, they put out a lot of flowers. And one more nominee, the last nominee is Rose Harrison Gilreith Empowers P C, another beautiful. And here's the secret envelope, please. Envelope, Kelly Furms running the show?
They're all still locked.
This is secret ballot. Runner-up, the winner is Rose Harrison Gilreith Empowers. There you are, lots of good stuff to get to these folks later.
These are the pigments.
You wear my heart tie.
So just to let all you guys know, Sue Kelly, of course, runs the show with the Community Appearance Commission, been doing a great job with it for years, but I did want to recognize the other members of that committee for their hard work and dedication. If any of them are here, please stand when I call your name. Jennifer Albines? Billy Dorn? Melinda McGalsky? There you go, thank you so much. Dave Rollins? Joe Williams? John Winley? The man, the myth, the legend. New, and the new members, Tyree Neal and Nancy Reschenbach. Reschenbach, there she is, yes, thank you so much for sharing. I just saw down the bottom of the paper, Sue Kelly, you've been doing this for a decade now?
I believe that's how old we are.
We are getting up there. Well, thank you so much for keeping our town beautiful and inspiring everybody to do such great work. It's a wonderful thing that you do, and thanks to your whole committee. I'll share that from the whole board.
Thank you for your support. And John Winley.
And John, yeah, John does a great job of keeping us posted even when you're not here, he's always keeping us posted. Well, that was fun. And John, my recommendation as outgoing mayor is rehearse more than I do. Let's see, where are we? Any ongoing business?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to new business. We have considerations for additional landscape and buffer requirements for commercial uses. There's some notes in packets, but I think the goal here is to have a little more discussion about kind of what direction we'd like to send staff, that famous thing?
Yeah, I'd be happy to give you the-
Give a little rundown?
The notes on it. So, so, yeah, go back, going back to a previous discussion, when we were looking at our landscaping and buffer, buffer requirements for commercial uses, and we were primarily talking about between incompatible uses, so say a single family and a gas station, or a single family and a retail store that's twenty-four hours, or a restaurant. We do already have rules and regulations in place for these, but that was the conversation that we were talking about it. The, the current ordinance, when it was adopted, the intentions are to provide separation of uses, promote aesthetic character, promote public health and safety through the reduction of noise, noise, air, and visual pollution. Right now, the town regulations for this type of incompatible use buffer is screening at the property line. That screening can either be a dense vegetative screen, or it can be a six-foot fence with landscaping on the outside. Additionally, the buffer has to be a depth of five feet along property lines and ten feet along property lines that abut streets. Several of the concerns that previously came up with these regulations, that they, they don't necessarily address commercial uses with greater intensity, like you were saying, maybe twenty-four hour places or restaurants that have noise, and also is fencing material. But primarily, the concern was that these regulations did not address more intense uses, nor require enough of a buffer from adjacent uses, adjacent properties. So we, we came up with just a couple of ballpark ideas of, of things that could address some of these issues and, and be added to our, our existing zoning ordinance. And we'll go through those, and then we can open it up for some general discussion, and then we could take something back to the planning board, or if we're still very general, we could, we could bring it back for further. But this is what we kind of came up with for some of the things we could do. You could increase the minimum buff, buffer depth. Some may not think five feet is really enough of an area if you're talking between an intensive.
Stop, stop.
Sorry about that. That's all right.
An arm of some sort.
This, this depth could, could vary based off of, you know, off what the use is, or how big the use is, and like, from a density stand, standpoint, like, it could be a larger buffer if the floor area ratio was greater. So, so looking at increasing buffer depth. We go ahead and address that concern from the fencing material that, don't just leave it as open as fencing, but actually choose what kind of fencing you want to see. We've, you know, we've, we've had good situations with vinyl or, or type of fencing, but it's also during a wind event, it's the first thing you see usually blowing around, and that may not be the best buffer either, is, that could be a mess. So looking at something to go ahead and codify it for wood block, engineered sound wall, whatever you guys are, are really thinking. And then we are also looking at, you could create an additional buffer requirement for commercial developments of budding the RL zone. So we've, we've talked about this in the past, too, that we have a, a really a hard line from zoning district from commercial zone to residential low zone. We have lots of single-family dwellings that are built in the commercial zone, but homes in the residential low zone may not, they never expected to, to maybe have, or that neighbor being in that zoning district, say, saw what the uses were. But you also could have an extra layer of buffering for that, that, that adjacent use being an actual zoning district line, so.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to it just a little bit, just to, to clarify. The first bullet is basically looking at the uses and creating a scale of intensity of use abutting a residence. And creating a scale of intensity of use abutting a residence, being an existing residence. Not someone that builds a residence after it's there, but an ex- so, that's kinda the first bullet, and then if you go to the third bullet, this is more of an or.
Or.
It doesn't deal with the intensity of a use, it simply blanketly makes the buffer between RL and commercial greater. Or a more, you know, a more intense buffer. A lot of the comments we got during the, um, discussion that this has gone around was, well, lows and targets have the big engineered walls. I don't know that that kind of intense, um, buffer is actually the most appealing, um, in our town. They did that because they agreed to it, not because we required it or could require it. So, when the last site plan came in, that there was a lot of discussion about it, we couldn't require that type of, of, um, buffer. And I don't know that that's exactly where the board wants to go, I, I believe I heard more block, wood, not vinyl, but, um, so, the first, the first one and the third one, I, I think that maybe you wanna look at that and decide if you wanna go with the use and existing, you know, adjacent properties, or if you want to look at the entire zone. So, just trying to give you an either/or and not, we can do both, but we're gonna create a tremendous amount of non-conformities, um, by doing both.
Yeah, um, does anyone wanna jump in and get it started?
You know, I'm, I'm thinking about depth, and I'm thinking that the issue really is the height. Cause when you look at, for example, um, residential low up to Wawa, a six-foot fence isn't a lot. So, I think with the intensity, if, if we could figure out a way to, with more intensity of the, the development, come up with a higher fence, maybe an eight-foot fence, or something to that effect, that might be beneficial, cause I know six foot's just not much.
And I'll add one, one more layer to it, is like, when, when you also look at, at a, a development, the buffer depth is what is the setback for things like parking.
Right.
So, buffer depth isn't only your buffer of, of landscaping or fencing, but it's also how close can a parking space or a drive-out be to someone else's property?
Right.
So, I think that came up as well, that, that may be something that a neighboring property didn't like, so.
I'm not opposed to, to looking at the depth part of it.
Right, I was just saying, I, I, I just wanted to make sure, that's an also a part of that buffer depth is, not necessarily just green space, but it's also, it works as our, um, as our, as our big setback-
Right.
For parking and drive-outs mostly.
I just, I just think, I just think a six-foot fence doesn't do a lot when you're talking about a, you know, real intense situation.
For sure.
But if I hear you, the corollary of what you're saying is that, you know, having a big six-foot fence, fence might not be what we wanna see, a paint store that's only open nine to five. You know, big fence, not really necessary, in that, that context.
Well, you know, I don't consider a six-foot fence a, a big fence.
Oh, yeah.
You know, um, but what I'm saying is, I don't think a six-foot fence, um, when you put it up beside something like a Wawa.
Sure.
I don't, I don't think it has any, you know, it's not gonna have any bearing really. I think you need something bigger.
I agree with Commissioner Gray, the height of the fence is important, but also, it would be kind of strange to, to require it across the board, you know, I mean, the 24-hour, like the Wawa, for instance, and I'm trying to think what else is 24-hours in Kill the Hills, not much, right? Uh, if anything, is that anything else?
Supermarkets.
Supermarket, oh, some of the supermarkets in the Seven, Seven-Eleven.
Sometimes Walgreens in the, in the summer. Used to be.
Don't look at me for that.
But there's a distinct difference between a restaurant and a dentist office.
Right, right.
And they're both in the commercial zone, and they're both considered commercial, and their intensity is different, and that's kinda where we were driving the intensity-
Yeah, for sure.
Like, a six-foot fence might be more than adequate for a dentist office.
Oh, 100%.
Right, right, I agree with that, I agree with that.
We don't want walls behind every business bu- abutting a residential zone, so, I, I don't think. So, but I, I think we do want walls, significant walls, behind something like a Wawa, um, in the future. Or, you know, something like, uh, um, a restaurant, for sure, if we ca- I mean-
So, yeah, if I'm here-
A restaurant's different too though, cause they're not obviously open 24-hours usually in their, you know.
I don't know what the formula is, that's-
How do you decide?
You guys are gonna have to figure it out.
Well, you, you can lump similar intensive, you can start at saying most intensive to least intensive.
Yeah.
And you can lump those into like, this is buffer type one, it's the, the least intense, buffer type two, you know, you, we can do things like-
Just break down the different-
It would be a gradual scale.
It'd be a gradual scale.
And we have a list of things in commercial, it's gotta be one of these X number of things, right?
Right.
What do you mean, like type of commercial, like?
Like, you would say, you would say something like an office or a, a office building, or a, a medical facility that's, a regular medical facility, not emergency, not the 24, would be in level one, and that would have the buffers that we have in place right this minute.
A gas station, a box store.
And then, and then the next one would be-
Yeah.
Maybe, uh, maybe a, a drive-through restaurant, and then, a restaurant with, you know, a nightclub or a bar, and then 24-hour businesses, or businesses that have deliveries 24-hours.
Yeah, I mean, we have warehouses in town, you know, we have light manufacturing, you, you know, that's probably on your higher side of things too, because they can abut other things.
The only thing was, I guess, is we don't wanna create unsightly walls everywhere.
Right.
And that's a, that's a, yeah, it's a, we, we definitely have in our ordinance, especially in the commercial zone, the, our commercial building exterior, and there's material requirements, and there was a, a look that was desired when that was written. You don't really notice it, lows and publics, cause the building's just that large.
Right.
And like, at this public, you would, you would see probably the wall first.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, that's-
I mean, the Wawa.
Wawa, I'm sorry.
You would, for sure.
I, I get your point there too.
So, the Wawa's not as high as the-
Yeah.
And it's not as wide.
Wide.
So, you're gonna be able to see on either side of it, when you look at the publics and lows, because of the way they're set back, and their parking lots are in front, the depth from the bypass makes it very difficult to, to catch those angles of the 15-foot engineered sound wall behind it. But their neighbors appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And if you go behind them now, that those businesses have been there a while, particularly lows, there's a lot of green-
Vegetation.
Um-
Right.
That, that, but, um-
Cause the vegetated buffer is also required behind the fence.
Correct.
How's this work going forward? I mean, it's all new development, it would be all new development, wouldn't everybody else's grandfathered in, is how it works?
Change of use would be-
They would be, they would become non-conforming.
But if you changed use, if you had like an office and you turned it into something else, you'd have to bring it up to-
Correct.
But you're only dealing with where you have a, a residential area abutting a commercial area, right?
It depends on if y'all wanna do it against an RL or against an existing residential use, so, it would be-
Yeah, lows beside publics, we have landscaping requirements between the two of them, but it's not a tremendous amount of landscaping, it's more to make it look, look nice. Then you have incompatible uses behind them, being single-family residential, that's where you, that's really the buffer we're talking about, that-
Right.
This discussion has come up, um-
Is where you abut that.
It's, yeah, it's your, it's your incompatible uses that are next to each other, being like a, a grocery store, a 24-hour gas station next to a single-family.
It's not blanket across every zone.
But, but those incompatible uses are also across zoning districts. We don't intend, um, unless the board tells us to create these, um, exponential or, or graduated buffers within the commercial zone for people who've chosen to build residential within a commercial zone, it would be-
It's only by the same-
Commercial that's abutting a resident in a residential zone.
Existing resident.
It depends on how you do it.
Oh.
You can make it all of RL.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that if I'm here, if I'm here, if I could summarize that, if I'm hearing you guys correctly, and you guys correctly, that we're kind of honing in on two, two themes here. One is that we throw around the term incompatible uses, but it's not really ever been defined. I think what we're, folk would seem to be coming towards is whenever it's commercial and RL, that's the delineation that we're trying to improve buffers. And then, we're also excited about your idea of a graduated scale, so-
Right.
If I'm, if I'm summarizing this correctly, send staff to make a proposal about graduated scale, that would apply at the, anytime that there's a property that, there's a property line that delineates between commercial and residential.
So, basically, depth doesn't matter as much to us, just the height of these walls.
No, we would, we would, we would be increasing, the graduated scale would increase depth, and what you've told us tonight gave us direction that we would also increase height with an increased depth.
And make, and make-
Yeah, the depth has value, yeah.
And also the, the make of the-
Materials.
The materials of the fence.
The materials, I think we got very clear from you, from you before, that vinyl is not gonna be acceptable in any situation anymore.
But what kinda wood, like, even wood, what would that be, like, I mean, slatted wood, it could be-
We've, we've seen like a shadow box style wooden fence in the past, you know, where it's, you know, bored on the inside, bored on the outside, so it lets wind through better, um, but it'd be a, you know, a solid fence.
And that would be for the, the lower rez, and then we'd do something more substantial for the higher intensity, yeah, that kinda what you're gonna do.
A, a more substantial material for the box store, or the, the 24-hour gas station, something.
I don't- I don't know that the materials would change, but the height would change, and wood would become impractical at some point.
I mean, do we know what's, what's best for, do you guys know what's best, uh, for sound?
Yeah, I mean, as, as soon as you start going up much more than eight feet, wood isn't really gonna be the, the best product out there, cause you, you don't really see many large engineered sound walls that are wood.
They have to be engineered after a certain height.
Oh, okay.
You're spending that much money, you want something that's gonna last, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that too.
That, that it can handle the wind loads, too, if you're an engineer, right?
But there's certainly, I mean, like, what, what we're talking is that, right now, the regulations have the same buffer from the small paint store to the massive supermarket. And that's where we're trying to bridge the gap and say, maybe something graduated to address big, big stores, and also more intensive 24-hour stores and that nature.
Cause right now, we have almost nothing, we have just vegetation, that's-
Vegetation, that's-
Or famine.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, so I think, what, how, you guys haven't weighed in much, do you feel like we've given the staff enough direction?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too. I'm kinda curious to see how the intensity scale is determined.
Still discuss it after that?
Yeah, just-
Yeah.
Lot of it-
How you define it?
Work and, uh, research are going to that, but I'm one who wants to be discussed.
Is the board comfortable with us creating it and taking it to the planning board, or would you like us to create it and bring it back to you prior to going to the planning board?
I'd like to go to the planning board.
I think they're waiting in the planning.
Okay.
I'm fine with that too, that's, yeah, moving along, could, yeah, consult along the way.
Yeah, we've got some, some great people there.
Run it by everybody. Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, those are the guys who should weigh in on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, we'll wrap up new, uh, new business item number one, and move on to number two, which is the site plan for 901 10th Avenue in the Light Industrial Two Zone. It's a proposed multifamily apartment building, associated site improvements.
Yes, sir, this is, um, 33-unit multifamily consisting of 27 two-bedrooms, six, um, three-bedrooms, 75 parking spaces, and associate, um, site improvements. Planning, um, department, and NIMOs and site plans all attached. At the September 19th meeting, the planning board voted approval, um, recommended approval to forward this to the Board of Commissioners. Recommending, um, several conditions which have been addressed, and staff recommends approval of site plan as presented. And Mr. Roberts is here, if you have any questions.
Alright, we've got, uh, our engineer here to take your questions. Any questions?
I do not.
I have a quick question, so on the, so the corner of 10th and Corrigan, there will be a stop sign there, that was in the notes somewhere.
I think it's probably, well, I don't know, but you could certainly add a stop sign there if there's not one already, there may already be one there.
Yeah, I, I-
It's just the L part?
I don't know, yeah, yeah, I just, it's just a tight area of that.
There probably isn't one, because it's not really-
I don't think there is, I'm pretty sure, I'm almost certain there's not.
The kinda place you would make a stop, yeah. Right.
Um, I parked across from there a lot when I took kids to run him, I don't think there is one there, and it, I'm just thinking with that many cars coming and going, I don't know, I, but, but I think it's in the note, I'm pretty sure it's in the notes, how when it's in-
I'm not sure it is, but, but we could certainly put it in here.
And we can review it, and if that is, if that's necessary to be added, then it would, um, be added to your official traffic map, which you would adopt, um, so we, we can kinda do that.
We could do that independent, cause it's a town street, yeah.
Right.
That was just my thought on that.
With PD? Let us review it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is certainly an efficient use of the space, so it's good to see what you can do on a site like that. Gotta look intently at their papers, I don't know if that means there's a question.
No question.
That was a question I had.
Well, I for one, was excited to see some multifamily in that space, you know, it's, it's zoned for it, it's why we have that area, it backs up to some woods. Not very many neighbors to be upset that it's in their neighborhood, um, it's a good spot, so, excited to see that happening. But, looking for a motion.
I got, I got a question, it's really, I don't know if the engineer's the right person to ask, but, would these units be strictly put up for sale, or would any of them be considered for a long-term rental? I guess the owner is the one who really should answer that.
Yeah, you know, he's kinda waffling, he's sorta going back and forth on what, how he's gonna convey these, whether, I know he's planning on holding on to a bunch of them. Um, I think they will, I think it's gonna be a mix, I think it's gonna be, I don't think he's shooting for short-term rentals, you know, like Airbnb-style rentals, I don't think that's even gonna be an option back there. But, um, I think his idea is to, to put them out for rental, long-term rentals primarily, and owner occupied, so.
Nice.
Yep, that far away from the ocean and the sound, it's the exact right spot for someone, but, yeah.
And at one time, there was a little bit of a concern of, um, stormwater. And that's been addressed as far as having a, uh, inverted flow line, a, a valley type. In other words, we're not gonna have water running off this site out onto the street, are we?
Oh, no, no, we're, we've taken care of that, we, it, I have a very detailed storm work plan, and, uh, it's been reviewed by Derek and Pete, and I think they're both very comfortable. Yeah, and, and I know they were concerned at one time during the review process. Yeah, we, you know, it was, these things that evolve as you're developing a plan like this, you know, um, they were talking about some valley gutters, or some, some valley, valleys at the roadway connections, which we incorporated into the grading plan in the storm.
Okay, good.
Good. I thought it was a very good plan.
Yeah.
Looked good to me.
One of our best, best zoning things is requiring the 10-year, two-hour storm to be contained on the site.
Oh, and we're well with it.
Way over that, yeah.
Yes.
So, of course, good to have extra volume, capacity.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Ingram, is there a second? We've got a second, Commissioner Gray, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next site plan review is 1208 Swan Street in the Light Industrial Two Zone, that's a five-unit multifamily townhouse associated with site improvements.
Yes, sir, and the planning board, um, recommended at their October 17th meeting to forward the site plan to the Board of Commissioners. Recommending approval pending several conditions which have been addressed, and staff recommends approval of the site plan as presented.
Alright, one more chance for questions about it. Any more?
No, I don't, no, no, I'm just-
Ha- has the additional survey been conducted? And they, they noted like, that, that, that it would be conducted, I'm just curious.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Michael Strater, I'm an engineer, civil engineer of record. And yes, that, all that additional survey was, was accumulated, we updated the plans, and that's, that is the plan that you're looking at.
Oh, okay, okay.
Already happened, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, feeling good about it?
Yeah, motion to approve the 1208 Swan Street site plans as presented.
You have a motion on the floor, Mr. McAvoy, and a second from Mr. Winley.
I'll second, sad to see Delvers place go, but, that's good.
Yeah, I'm sure he's, he's, uh, having opinions up in the sky. Um, but yeah, good, beautiful piece of property right there. Uh, so we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
She went there.
That's right.
So, it's nicely done.
That's a, that's a good joke to walk out on.
Quality, I gotta give it a point. Style points for that one, style points for that. So, planning board appointment. So, I thought we already talked about Dylan. Did we already take care of that? Alright, so we need to make it official. That's what it was, I remember. So, who would like to do the honors?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dylan Hawkins.
Second.
Excellent, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, really appreciate everything Dylan's done for us over the last four, five years. It's been hard work and thoughtful.
Mm-hmm.
Person, person to have on that job. We're really, really pleased about that.
Doing a great job. Yeah, he does, he does good work. He was on my West Side community too.
West Side group, yeah.
Excellent guy.
Yeah. Ran for Commissioner, yeah, he's always thoughtful. So, anyway, um, we've got a motion, a second, um, any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Congratulations to Dylan. When you watch this on YouTube later, thank you for all your hard work. We're excited to have you on the planning board. Alrighty, so that gets us to committee reports. Anything new in the visitors' real world?
Uh, I don't even know what they're saying, so.
Do I still have a meeting right after me? So, there was a meeting.
I know, I do. Although we did have the summit, I did, um, but we had the summit a couple of weeks ago and that was great, really well attended, really good speakers.
The summit, yeah, there you go.
Um, and they, um, did some work on, on presentations on the long-range tours and plan, which is coming along nicely. Um, I will say there was a hundred and six applicants to be on a twenty-person, um, board or advisory committee for the long-range tourism plan.
Wow. That's amazing.
So, I think that really speaks to the work that the tourism board has done in educating people and also including people from the community in the tourism plan, so. Um, if you haven't seen, um, Outer Banks Raw, which you might not have seen those unless you see it, maybe posted on social media because those ads are not running here, but if you haven't checked them out, they're the new advertising campaign, which, um, is they're doing to attract conscientious vi- visitors, so, um, there's one on fishing, one on surfing, and the idea is to attract people to the area who care about our resources and who are a little bit more cognizant of the resources that we have, so.
Align with our values for nature and stuff, yeah.
Right, right. So, I think the next one coming out is birding, um, so.
I mean, for folks that hadn't been keeping up with it, they're working on ways to, um, offer people who come on vacation the opportunity to give back, to participate in philanthropies and
Voluntourism.
voluntourism and all that, which I think is a great, great vision for the future of our destination. So, the lines are pointing at what we're all about. So, give them a big, big credit for doing that.
Okay.
So, for any other committee reports?
I'll just take a moment to, uh, acknowledge Sue Kelly and everybody on the CAC for a very nice job with the Community Appearance Awards and all the good work the CAC does, so thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Pretty, pretty class act.
I know.
About to get an upgrade. About to get an upgrade on your MC.
Sue makes, uh, being the board representative on the CAC is like, uh, it's a fun and easy appointment because Sue does such a good job with these committee reports at our board meetings, I, I couldn't do, no one could do better, so thank you, Sue.
You're doing a great job. And it makes a difference, really makes a difference. Meeting is Thursday, if anybody wants to jump in. Open to the public.
No committee report.
No committee report.
Alrighty. Commissioner's agenda, let's start this.
Yes, sir, tomorrow.
Yes, big day.
It's a big day. Uh, are you ready?
I'm ready. I got my team ready.
You got, you got the drone, drone team ready?
I think we officially have five. We might have six, six drones.
We, uh, we're gonna be, uh, escorting the wall that heals, uh, to the event center in Nagshead.
From Columbia, right?
From Columbia, from the Terrill Hall, and I tell you, the numbers are pretty impressive, what I'm hearing, uh, supposedly half of them may show up, but if we get all of them, it's gonna be phenomenal. I've got four hundred motorcycles that have indicated they wanna escort this in.
That's really cool.
Uh, we've got about sixty, uh, Jeeps. Uh, it's gonna be a very big event.
How long do you think, how long do you think that's gonna stretch out to?
I have no clue.
You're supposed to be the expert on this stuff.
Well, I, I did a toy run one time that stretched from the Hilton Garden Inn all the way to Collington Road.
How many is that?
And I think that was probably about a hundred and eighty motorcycles. I think this is gonna be a lot bigger.
Whoa, that was big.
Um, we've got people coming from tidewater area, um, it, it's, it's a pretty moving situation, you know, uh. But I hope everybody gets a chance. It's gonna be open twenty-four hours from, uh, the sixteenth to the nineteenth. Um, and, uh, I hope everybody gets a chance to go see it. Uh, I'll be a little bit cold in the morning, but I'll be glad to do it.
It's gotta be something else, yeah, really excited about that. It's good to see a whole bunch of folks that I called no longer fly drones. A whole bunch of new people showed up too, so.
Oh, really? We're good.
Where's the best, where's the best time, place to watch it?
We're gonna leave, um, we're gonna leave Columbia at one forty-five. Um, we should come through the old Man's Harbor Bridge. We're gonna go through Man's Harbor and then come through Mannyo. Uh, we should probably hit the old Man's Harbor Bridge at about two forty-five, two fifty, something like that. Um, a lot of people are getting together on the causeway. Yeah, and that's.
That's the place where you could park.
Yeah, that should probably be close to three o'clock, something to that effect. We're hoping three fifteen, we'll be at the event site in time. Drinking coffee, lots of it.
And I imagine they're supposed to be hanging out there for a while.
Yeah.
After three fifteen, that'd be kind of a social event at that point.
You watch them put it together or can you?
They actually put, they, they'll start putting it together and everything, yeah, pull out panels and hook it up. There's videos, um, that you can see on the Dare County website that are very interesting.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it should be something. Cool.
Yep, it will be.
So, there, I think there's a, there's a link, uh, I think that they said they were gonna post a link at one o'clock that will have like live tracking.
It will, yeah.
So, you'll be able to track it, so that's what we're all gonna be watching. Is it here yet? Oh, I turned, I gotta get the drone up here, so it should be exciting.
I know the kids are off, so, you know.
Yeah.
I know it's a big deal, the kids are school early for it, that's a good deal.
It's gonna be, uh, phenomenal.
Took a half day off of work.
That'd be cool.
Thank you for your drone work.
Appreciate it, excited.
Nothing Commissioner requires.
Commissioners require.
I just wanted to take, uh, time to thank the Board of Elections for, they are, they do phenomenal work and they pull some really long hours. Sandy Markland was amazing and she is, I just wanted to say thank you to them.
Takes a long time to count all those votes.
I, I, I'll second Ivy's, uh, comment. I, the whole team here did a really good job. They had a, a pretty quiet early voting and then had to make up for it in double overtime election day and all the, you know, all the people from Collington tried to come in, kinda gummed the works up a little bit, but they handled it well, kept things moving and, uh, you know, thank you, Sandy, and everyone involved.
Yes, I think the folks that found out they can't vote will remember it.
Yeah.
I think they get confused because they can early vote here.
Yeah.
And then somebody says, well, I voted there and so they.
Yeah, easy mistake to make.
But you have some of them that'll just stand up and say, no, I get my mail in Kill Double Hills and that's where I'm from, is Kill Double Hill.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, that's right.
They get confused with the post office.
That'll do.
The mailing address.
It's true in so many towns, Stanton, Virginia's like, man, oh, you're not really in Stanton, you're in the county.
They ever talk about taking the mailing address and making it different city-wise? Kill, I mean, their mailing address is Kill Double Hills. Is, has there ever been any talk about that? Just always curious because I think that's why, you know, they, they're like, you know, there are people in cotton that believe that we represent them.
I, I know. Believe me, I know.
You get phone calls every day.
I know, because they think you, they think you manage them, yes, but, uh.
I, I don't think so. I mean, like, I'll use an example, where my family farm is.
Yeah.
Is not the address.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, it's not in that town.
Right, so it's not corporate in town, so it's not, yeah, it's not gonna say Collington.
Um, so it's not uncommon. Right.
Town of Collington.
Collington's not a, not a place.
Not a.
Kids walking southern shores have the same zip code too.
Oh, the same zip code, but it's not the same city, you know, this, there's, that's the city.
Yeah, but I mean, either one goes to the same post office.
Yeah, I know, I know they have the same zip codes.
Harons Point's gotta do that too, so.
That's not the thing.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a solution, nobody's figured it out yet, but.
No.
I think it's just being a little bit more in the know of where you live and who your elected officials are.
It's understood, things understand. Yeah, yeah.
The job is never finished on that one.
Yeah.
But yeah, they, uh, for those who weren't aware, there, there was a line almost the end of the sidewalk from eleven to like seven.
Yeah.
It was pretty solid all day. It'd expand and contract, yeah, almost to the curb a couple of times. Yeah, they did a good job. It was, it was, uh, it's a tough job. Well, thank you for that. That's all the Commissioner's agenda. Um, Mayor's agenda? Not much of an agenda anymore. So, I will leave it at that. Um, Town Manager's agenda?
No, sir, not this evening, thank you.
Town Attorney, of course, not here, let's.
And he didn't, he did not have anything.
Let's talk about the consent agenda then.
Yes, sir. Minutes from the October ninth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, September twenty-twenty-three monthly report, budget amendments, um, is outlined in my memo, three, four, five and six. Um, scheduling a public hearing, historical landmark designation, five hundred West Avalon Drive, the Sharp Cottage. Um, request that the board set a public hearing for Monday, December the eleventh, twenty-twenty-three at six P M. Approval of the consent agenda will schedule this public hearing. And lastly, um, recommendations for the acceptance of street improvements to East Corrigan Street and the adoption of the official traffic map and power bill map for the town of Kill Double Hills to reflect the, um, improvements. Approval of the consent agenda will adopt the attached resolutions which accept the street, revise the official's traffic map and, um, as well as the power bill map. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented and a motion would be in order.
So, move through one question.
Yes, sir.
Number four.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to appropriate funds for the water system development and connection to the new firehouse.
Yes, sir.
Now, is that a shared cost?
This is, this is our cost. Dare County's paid their cost for the PMS.
Okay, that answers my question, that they
Yes.
stepped up to the play.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
We're, and we're just doing, just to keep our two funds.
Yeah, okay.
Nice and clean, keep it clean.
Nice and clean.
So, we have a motion from Commissioner Gray.
I'll second.
And a second from Commissioner Ingram. Any further discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries, we have a consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
We have one more option for public comment. Uh, see some familiar faces out there. Anybody holding back something they wanted to say for the end of the meeting? Seeing nobody move, I'll call, going once, going twice. We will close public comment. Oh, uh, we mentioned that too, that's a good idea. Um, should've mentioned other mayor's agenda, that first flight market at Aviation Park. We got a few of them coming up Saturday, November eighteenth from ten A M. to two P M. Then Tuesday, the twelfth, from four P M. to seven P M. weekday. And then one more Saturday, December sixteenth, ten A M. to two P M. Find all this stuff on our social media, tell all your friends. Make sure all of our artists and artisans have a great holiday season and everybody has cool things for their holidays. And, uh, I, uh, guess I could've said something to Mayor at the Mayor's agenda, which generally, um, we've got basically gonna hand off the gavel next meeting, um. But, uh, I know that you all will continue all the good work that we've been doing and, uh, follow up with all the things we haven't finished. Uh, improve our beach accesses, keep the bypass looking nice, work towards getting some access to the sound, et cetera, et cetera.
They were out doing the, uh, gutter and cleaning. I saw them
Yeah, yeah.
just, just here today, uh, yesterday and saw them. Uh, so they were doing another sweep. Looked pretty good.
Yeah, they're, they're pro. Yeah, I, I noticed, I don't know, maybe, maybe people don't notice, but I think it really makes the whole town look better and it's the little things, it's the little things.
Looks nice.
Been talking about that for ten years, so it made me very happy to see that happen this year. Glad we got that in the budget and hope we keep it going in that direction, so.
I know, I speak for everybody that we were thankful for all your hard work and all your work for the last four years that I've been here.
Thank you, sir.
Um, so, we appreciate that.
It's been a pleasure working with you and, uh, we'll have one more day to say all our real goodbyes, but, uh, yeah, it's been a pleasure, you guys. Thanks for everything. So, we will call it a night. Alright, make the motion.
I'll make the motion too again.
She made the motion.
Second.
And we got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing adjourned.